All right, thank you and welcome on this cold and blustery night. Are we not tired of all this rain already? I mean, this is crazy. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and this Accessor Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. Today is Tuesday, November 26th. And if we could please start- All right, thank you and welcome on this cold and blustery night. Are we not tired of all this rain already? I mean, this is crazy. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council. We're good? All right. As Councilmember Moore said, you know, you don't get enough of hearing me already. You're gonna get it twice, everything I say tonight, apparently. Sorry about that. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Delauso?
Here.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Here.
All right, we are at Item 3, which is our Pledge of Allegiance. I've asked Ava to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could all stand and follow her lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. I'm gonna do my best to try not to cough this evening, but I've been coughing for two weeks, and I think it's muscle memory now. So I do apologize in advance if- I'll turn my microphone off and we'll try to fumble our way through that. All right, Item 4 is Approval of Minutes and Notice of Waiving of Reading of All Resolutions and Ordinances Introduced and/or Adopted Under This Agenda, and we have our regular council meeting minutes from November 12.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That would be me, since I wasn't here. Item 5 is Announcements. I'll have you as a backup. Thank you for the offer. Maybe I should just start coughing, and then you have to read all the announcements, huh? See, now you got me going. Okay, under Announcements, Meeting Orientation for New Attendees and Viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com, or by texting your zip code, which is (94931) to (888) 777. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. The annual holiday food drive sponsored by the City of Kattati and the California Homemakers Association will be taking place on Saturday, December 21st. Food collection is from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., located behind City Hall, and food will be distributed at that point in time with a cadre of volunteers to various areas in Sonoma County. And finally, come join us for our annual holiday tree lighting in La Plaza Park. We will have food and craft vendors, horse and carriage, and trackless train rides starting at 4:00 p.m. The night will be fun- no, it will be- it will be fun, but it will be full of music, free coffee, hot cocoa, and cookies, and more. All right.
I noticed the date was missing. That's December 6th, Friday.
Thank you. Thank you for catching that. All right, now, we're at one of our favorite parts of the meetings, and that is our honorary mayor. And we have Ava Franzini from Lawrence Jones Middle School. And Ava, please come up. And I know, since- even though I told you before the meeting started I missed the meeting, I actually watched it on TV, so I heard everything you had to say. And I'm not gonna quiz you on it. It's gonna be easy, but I think you were given a homework assignment from the vice mayor, were you not? Yes, you were, so we'd love to hear about that.
Okay, so, for children my age, we're- we want things to do that aren't scheduled because then we would have to make a commitment and, like, it's more of a spur-of-the-moment thing where we wanna have something to do, like, some people go to the park, but then you can get into- you can get yourself into trouble for what you're doing at the park, like, since you're with friends, without adults, or something. So we just want more things to do for us kids.
You're very free-spirited, is what I'm hearing. Not a lot of structured- you know, that's interesting. I've heard that over the years as my kids have grown up. There was structured stuff, you know, Little League Baseball, different things like that, Girl Scouts. I have a son and a daughter, just in case anybody's trying to put two and two together there. And, but, but as they were getting older, I kept hearing more and more about, you know, the concept of, you know, we don't wanna have to go to practice from 4:00 to 6:00. I mean, give us some free time to do stuff. So it's good to hear that that's still out there. We're gonna go around the table, see if there's any questions from anybody. I'll start with Councilmember Moore.
Well, thank you, Ava. So you're- you were thinking more of like a drop-in center, where you would have an area that you could go and hang and chill and relax and socialize and do whatever activities you might wanna do in that arena? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. We were getting to that point. We've been working and building up our recreation department, and we know that there is a desire to have like a teen center. So we're trying to get to that point. And I think that within the next period of time, we will have some sort of a teen center down here at the community center that would fit that need. Because it's good to have a place where kids can go and feel safe and have an environment where they can just chill. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Councilmember Harvey?
Whoops, lost microphone. Yeah, the other thing that you might want to keep your eyes and ears open for as it develops is the park in the back of us, because we will be developing that whole area. And when they go through more detail of the items that are in there, there's a lot of things that have already been discussed, but I think that that's a good point for maybe you and some of your friends, when those meetings happen, for you to come and say the kinds of things that you would find useful for teens to hang out and do things. But thank you for that input, and thank you for being our honorary mayor.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. And Vice Mayor Skilman?
Thank you. So yes, thank you again for being back here, and I know it was a little bit nerve-wracking last time. Hopefully, this time it's a little bit better, because you've been here once, you've met everybody, we're not being mean or scary, so hopefully it's not as bad as it was two weeks ago. So, and thank you for checking in with your friends and fellow students, and just finding out what people would be interested in doing around here. And it would be great, too, and one of the things that we were looking at, and I don't know if you have any interest in this, but some people were saying that they were interested in maybe having a skate park or something like that when we develop the park behind City Hall here. So if you have any friends who are interested, tell them to come by and vote yea on that. So again, thank you for being here tonight, and I hope you have a good Thanksgiving.
You too, thank you.
So why do I keep turning my microphone off and not turning it back on? Ava, I think you probably came here with some people, and maybe you could introduce them and say their name and who they are into that microphone, so everybody can hear. Do your best. You know who they are, I know that.
Okay, so I'm here with my mom, Kim, my aunt, Lynn, and then my principal, Mr. Gottlieb, King, too.
Excellent, great to have them here. And, yeah, thank you very much for coming to two of these city council meetings and being our official honorary mayor for the month of November. And we have a certificate we'd like to present to you, and I say "we" because we are all gonna come down for a photo op. So stay right there. And I was gonna say, it's a school night, so if you need to go home early, you can, but it's really not a school night. You guys are out this week, so I think you need to stay here all the way through the closed session. She's not listening, so I can say that stuff, it's fine. All right, as long as- yeah, you guys heard that. No, no, you, you're free to go, certainly at any time, and thank you for being here. Okay, we are at Item 7, which is Presentations. We're gonna have a discussion of California Senate Bill 998, which I know Ava's been talking about that at school for a couple of weeks, so she's probably really into that. So I will turn this over to Damian and Angela.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. So back in May 2018, we presented a presentation as well about SB 998 before it was brought into law, and then in September, it was actually written into law. And so we're just gonna provide a brief summary of what actually came to pass and how that's going, we're planning on tackling all the different pieces of it going forward and to get some- push it out to you, the information, as well as get some feedback. So the generation of SB 998, as was previously presented, really came out of AB 401, which enacted the low-income assistance program, but the state subsequently didn't follow through on a lot of that. And so SB 998 came through to try and actually implement a lot of the pieces that were not coming through with the AB 401. So this was to help low-income assistance for those in need, specifically for water utilities. This SB 998, as I said, builds on existing law and adds more regulatory authority over the public utilities, including water corporations. So this, again, is really just another big piece of just bringing water assistance and ability to pay for utility services to those of low income and in more need of assistance as waters then now defined as a resource for all. So the goals of this is to minimize the number of Californians to lose access to water and due to their inability to pay for the water service, ensure that all are treated equally no matter their ability to speak English or to- with health needs. The deadlines to meet this, for us, will be April 1st, 2020, as we are not a PUC-regulated utility. So these are the requirements of the SB 998. So we will have to provide a policy, both written, if requested, and published online. That policy will have to be translated into five different languages. Let me list out the different languages, as well as any languages that are spoken by more than 10% of our population, things we don't have. So this policy will be have to- have to be translated into Spanish, Chinese, Korean, Vietnamese, and Tagalog. We'll have to have a plan, a written plan, for any deferred or reduced payments, and provide alternative payment schedules. So this AB 998 does not apply to all customers. It really only provides it for residential customers. So it doesn't apply to any commercial or non-residential accounts. But as you'll see, it does apply to multi-unit residential structures, as well as mobile home parks. So this really is a multi-pronged program, where you have a prohibition on shut-off if a utility, if they can prove their three requirements, that they have a health condition, that they are on government assistance, and that they agree to a payment plan, or if they've started an appeal process. So it has to have either an appeal, or all three of those other items. And the appeal process does have to start prior to the bill being passed to- at the shut-off date, so it has to be made in advance. So what do these different things mean? So a low-income certification can come at a customer's word regarding their low-income status, and they must allow for acceptance of any of the public assistance programs that they have listed on the program, which that would be CalFresh, Medi-Cal. If they can prove that they're on any of those programs, then we have to accept that as validation of their low-income status. The payment plans should result- we're still getting clarification about what payment plans mean and what a current balance means, but the bill does stipulate that a repayment plan should result in a repayment of any outstanding balance within 12 months. So they are expecting this to be a reduced, only 12-month payment plan. They don't want things that are extended very long, because that then also does undue harm for low-income residents. And then again, also, their health standing must be- we can request verification from a medical practitioner, but if they don't have resources to pay for medical protection or to say that they have health issues, and that also becomes another standard. So under SB 998, there is a requirement there, you have to wait a 60-day period after the delinquency before shut-offs. And we have to provide at least seven days' notice before any shut-offs. The written notice must be mailed to the customers of residence or the property served with a description of the extended payment policy. So this also extends to the resident of the address, so if the bill utility is in a landlord's name, we also have to provide written notice to the tenant, so that they can have the option to put the utility into their own name in order to pay the bill and keep their water service on. So under our current process, there's a big, long list. So we currently have a two-month billing cycle, where the start of service, under this example, we use the billing cycle from June to August. So that's our June 15th to August 15th. We have the two months. Invoices are sent approximately 15 days later, so the beginning of the month in September. And so we have a long process of steps that we go through before we receive payment or we perform any shut-offs. So you'll notice that all the way up until October 22nd, that's when the shut-offs actually happen. So under this current process, from the first day of use, we're extending the water for 129 days before there's any shut-off. And then from the bill date to the due date, so the- because the bills are payable upon receipt, there's a total of 50 days between when we mail out the bills and they are received by the customer before we can shut them off. So currently, we're only about 10 days less than that 60-day minimum requirement for shut-off. So we are extending quite a long term before we're shutting off these bills, including the additional time of service and use of the waters before the utility's being shut-off. Under SB 998, again, it doesn't extend it that much more from that first day of use, it's just had additional 10 days, moving it from that 129 days to 139 days now from that first use. And then the bill date to the due date is now 60 days, now meeting that AB 998 requirement of the 60 days before you can shut off service. What we are currently looking at is the possibility of reaching out to our customers with a shorter period by switching to a monthly billing cycle, and how this would help the low-income residents as well, being able to have a monthly billing cycle, have a regular payment, have the ability to pay more quickly, to identify the use of funds that are needed more efficiently, as well as reduce the liability and the outstanding usage on the city before having additional fees and other items that can add up quite quickly, especially for low-income residents that might not be able to get enough funds to cover a full two-month cycle of utility service. So with changing this and looking at the timing, we go from a sample monthly billing from that first day of use to the bills- to the shut-off, we move to 109 days instead of 129 days, and we still continue to have that 60 days between billing and shut-off. So giving them a longer time to actually have the bill and get their monies ready to pay if they get to that shut-off point. But again, making the cycle shorter and the balance due much more minimal. And again, the timing does not change much. We would still have the same shut-off cycle for us here at City Hall, and the total number of days to shut off would significantly decrease. So in order for customers to get restoration of their services, they have to have- we have to have a full instructions on how they're going to be paying this, so they'll be in a agreement as to how they're gonna pay the services. And we'll provide them that before they're shut-off. Hey, if you're shut off, this is what you need to do to get your utilities back on. So here's your schedule, you need to call us if you need a payment plan, these are the three things that we need, your health, your this, the other, in order to get you on a payment plan. SB 998 does limit the restoration fees for low-income residents. However, those fees are already lower than what we currently charge, even the past due fees. Sorry, yes, the minimum is higher than what we currently charge. We charge less than what the SB 998 is required. Thank you. Other way around. Now, as far as what we have to do on our side, in addition to translating our new policy into multiple languages and creating new pamphlets to lead people to our website as to that policy, we also have to report annually out the number of shut-offs for inability to pay on our website, as well as report out to the state board. And this does come with penalties by the day if it's not reported. And this penalty is supposed to be the mechanism by which the state is going to be able to provide additional assistance to low-income residents, but that, again, is not clarified in the language of the bill. So that's my brief summary. And now what we're- our next steps are, we're gonna have to have, again, that draft policy that will come back, as well as an update to our city code for all the new requirements that we're gonna have to make regards to this bill. We're gonna have that up for a public hearing, a notification out to those utility customers so we can get some feedback as to what's required, what they're asking for, what they want, and update our notification processes to them so that they are available in the multiple languages. And then, again, this has to be implemented before April 1st.
Thanks, Angela. I'll just, so I'll just add, in addition to just sort of the general summary of SB 998, also, what we're, I guess, seeking some feedback on, if you have any, is, is, as we implement, as we implement this policy, as we bring a draft policy forward, the monthly versus bimonthly billing that Angela described, and if you have any thoughts on that, it would be helpful as we craft the policy to bring it forward later. So, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks for that presentation. Are there any questions for staff before we get public comment? Go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
So, within generally the Sonoma County area, do we have a sense as to how many cities are monthly versus bimonthly?
I do know that I've reached out to a few of them, and I do know that Rona Park specifically is looking to move to monthly, in regards to this bill. I've not come back from a couple others, so I believe-
Yeah, I'll just add, like, Santa Rosa is monthly. I believe Petalinga's monthly. Rona Park is moving to monthly. I'm not sure about some of the smaller cities, but we could find out.
Yeah, I mean, that makes- that does make sense, because you do have these spikes. The other thing, on the payment plans, it's a little unclear in the language what happens, because this could be a cumulative problem. So how many payment plans can a residence be on, and is there a point of, well, gee, you haven't been doing this for five years, and we've got you on these payment plans for every single month? I didn't see anything that kinda helped with that, because if people are having a problem paying it, I'm unclear how the payment plan is really gonna help if you're gonna get another bill the next month, because it's not like you bought something, you put it on a payment plan, and you have 12 months to pay it off the next month or the month after. You're gonna get another one. So any sense on that?
We're hoping to get clarification on that, because it does say that it- they are saying that all other balances must remain current for them not to be able to be shut-off, but there's no clarification of that current includes new payment plans, so that's something we're hoping to get clarification on, yeah.
Yeah, because it just seems to me that you could end up with a cumulative problem, and it would be hard for someone to really grasp having a whole bunch of these payment plans, and, you know, how much am I paying on each one of them, and when is one gonna roll off, and, you know, and it just seems very confusing to me.
Yeah, and, yeah, I will add, just in our own, in our own internal discussions, the, I guess, the consensus, but we still, as Angela said, need to confirm this, is that like one payment plan at a time, you know? In other words, you can't just like be defaulting each month and have like 12 different payment plans all rolling on each other because that would be crazy.
But, it didn't seem to address that. I mean, if you had a problem one month and you still have the same problem the next month, it just didn't seem very clear in the bill language that was in there.
It seemed like the assumption was made that once you went on one of those payment plans...
It's just a once-in-awhile, yeah.
Yeah, and that could very well be the case for many people where, you know, it's just, it was a really bad month, there were extra bills to pay. So, looking at it from that perspective, this makes a lot of sense. But, if you're in a situation where, right now, every two months, but if it goes to every month, you can't make that payment, that's a bigger problem.
Right, exactly. That's what I was worried about, and how many of those could you have? So, thank you.
All right, good questions. Thank you. Councilmember Moore, any questions for staff?
I'm not sure that I would see that you would have a continuous repayment plan because if at one point you had a repayment plan and then you came in, and then you hit that cutoff period on the next one.
Water.
Yeah. And then, how many of our residents are, what percentage do we have that normally we would have shut-offs on? Less than 5%? Less than 3%?
Yeah, we're currently down to less than 5% now with our notification and our e-billings and everything else that we've done to get more digital and getting information out. We have definitely significantly decreased our shut-offs.
Okay. In the bill, I didn't see where it referenced anything that might have to do with a high-volume user and a residential that may be all cultivating and the residents and have a greater level of water. So, there's no checking on those types of things or no area that would address something like that? I mean, if we know we have a permitted situation where they're using a high level of water...
Well, this does not cover commercial, but anything that is residential, I mean, including multi-unit, would be included in this type of coverage. So, if it was a residential area, then that would be covered under this bill.
In terms of usage amounts, you know, we're able to set people up so that they can get warnings. I mean, I know this isn't the specific situation you're talking about, but if it's a, if it's a unanticipated or in planned use, they get warnings immediately almost about that.
Okay, because I know we do have some residents that are into cannabis cultivation, both recreationally and medicinally. And if I understand correctly, medicinally, has the ability to have a higher level of crops, plants growing?
Yeah, well, I think people are allowed up to six in residential properties.
So, I'm not sure what the water consumption is on that, but...
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they're, you know, if their account's in good standing and they're growing, you know, six or less, then there's nothing, I mean, within the boundaries of the ordinances, there's, that's permissible.
So, it's just, it's really not addressed there?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, of the five languages, there was nothing in reference to our new social media language with Russian? Nothing on that?
We'll take that into consideration. Thank you for your comments. Moving along. Vice Mayor Skilman, any questions?
No questions on that. I just have a few comments to make when we're looking for feedback.
Okay, great. As do I. So, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment if anybody would like to speak on this issue. Mr. Hancock?
Yes, good evening, Council. I think it's a good idea to move to a monthly, but I think also there is perhaps, if the accounting system could facilitate it, if there was changes there, something whereby people maybe could add extra to their bill, make a donation, so that it could go into a pot that perhaps could come from, be supportive of low-income people. I know that happens with the electricity utility bill, not to mention any dreaded names here, but I certainly make an extra donation every month for, you know, low-income support. I would think that it maybe should, the difficulty with any sort of billing system like this is how the decision is made. I mean, it's very expensive really to manage any, any form of delinquent billing. And so, how somebody transitions into that, but maybe it's a trust system, just to begin with, as outlined in the, in the bill of some sort. I would also think it would actually apply to some sort of maximum usage, you know, a maximum minimum, if you like. So, some sort of, if you like, coming from a, if there was a donation pot or a common pot, it would only apply to the first so many thousand gallons that somebody uses. So, I mean, typically, it's homeowners that are paying the bill. So, typically, that's property owners. But, if it defaulted to somebody who was in a rental situation where they had to pick up on it, it would be very unusual, I would think, but I don't know. Anyway, that would be my comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Just a couple of things that kind of came to mind. So, moving to a monthly billing cycle is just, I'm going to focus on that for a second. It seems like a preponderance of bills that we all pay, for whatever purposes they are, that are on some kind of a cycle are typically monthly. And, you know, and I know I've had discussions with the city manager about this, you know, it could be a good thing for the payee that you're paying half. So, maybe it's not as big of a financial burden, but it is more frequent. It's every month now. So, I don't, I don't know how that balances out. I think it goes back to Councilmember Harvey and your question. To me, it's, is it a one-time or, you know, a once or twice-a-year kind of issue? Or is it a regularly occurring issue? And I guess, you know, one of the options would be then the water gets shut off. I mean, that's, you know, that's harsh, but I'm going to the extreme. I mean, if every month you're in arrears and you never catch up, you know, then, I mean, how else would we deal with that? Would we, would that not be at least an option is to, the water would be shut off until everything is paid?
Well, I think under this bill, you wouldn't, if they had those three criteria...
Right.
Then, we couldn't shut them off. So, we wouldn't, we would no longer have that mechanism.
So, even, even after a time period? I thought there was something about a time period in there. I can't remember now. Like, after three or four or five months, then you had the ability to shut it down?
So, that's what we're currently following up on. We don't know if you could have multiple, because you can still keep your balance current. Is that what, that's what it says, is that you must keep your balance current?
Right.
Whether that current balance is a continuing, like a credit card where you add more balance to it, but you still keep your credit card current because you're paying the minimum balance due? If that's what they're saying by current, or if they're saying you can only have one payment plan at a time and you have to keep everything else, all the new balances in total, current?
And as I understand it, the, there was a six, in the bill, there's 60 days, which I think would apply to everybody, right? There's no shut-offs until 60 days regardless, right?
Right.
That's just across the board. But, then, there's this other layer of, if you meet the three criteria that Angela spoke about, you can also, you have this other avenue of a, of like a financing plan to, to pay back the, what was owed. And as you said, I, at least I think our current read, but we need to get total confirmation on this, is that, that you'd have one of those at a time and then you pay it. From my perspective, I think it would be paid off in its entirety, and then maybe you could open up another one, you know? But, you wouldn't want to be having multiple ones or having like a minimum balance kind of situation like you would with a credit card because I don't see how that helps anybody. It just compounds a problem, I would think, for somebody.
Yeah, and it seems, I still think there's more of an advantage to going to a monthly billing cycle, not just for the person paying bills, but also for the city as far as regular, a more steady flow of an income as opposed to being chopped up, you know, every couple of months. And then, my bigger concern is if somebody can't pay in our current system, you know, you could be six months down the road before any real action is taken, and that just seems really crazy. Because then, I mean, you're building this debt that you'll never dig out of kind of a thing. So, yeah, I don't know. It just doesn't make enough sense to me, the current system that we have, I'm saying. So, okay, those were just a couple of questions I had. I'm going this way this time, and I'll start with Vice Mayor Skilman if you have any thoughts or feelings.
Yes, and I, I do think, I like the idea of moving to a monthly billing system. I think when I was really paycheck to paycheck and counting pennies, it helped to know what my monthly budget was every month, rather than thinking, okay, April is this, but then the water bills due May, and so I have to, you know, it just, it kind of helps to make it more consistent. Also, it occurs to me that a lot of times we include updates and notices about what's going on in the city, and therefore, it would be a lot more up-to-date. And you wouldn't be saying, oh, by the way, two months ago, this great thing happened. So, that just occurred to me. And I also really like that idea of being able to have the option to, like, round up your bill or make some sort of donation to be held in case there is somebody who's starting to fall behind. You can pull from that if that's something that's manageable, so...
So, I know, just to speak on that, that is something that we used to have. We did have the donation on the bill, which was specifically for rec previously, where people can opt-in to donate to the recreation program. I believe that went away about four, five years ago, but we still have that within our system, and so we do have that availability. It's just not set up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. And we'll go to Councilmember Harvey. You thought I was going to look right past you, didn't you?
I did.
I know.
I agree with the others about moving to monthly. I think it does help with budgeting. I think the whole thing behind this, if you really look at what, the words behind this, what it's really trying to say is that they really don't want you to turn off any water to anyone who's low-income. So, I suspect that some of this stuff is vague, just so you're kind of wondering what it is. But, if you read the gist behind what this bill is, it's to stop disconnections on people that don't have an ability to pay. Everyone should get water is basically what the bill is saying. So, I suspect that the answer will be that we'll have a whole bunch of these, and at some point, we will have to decide what to do with those balances. Because I think what they're really saying is just because someone doesn't have money doesn't mean they get wa, don't get water. So, I think that will ferret itself out as you find out more, but I think that's the gist of what they're, they're trying to do here. But, I do think that it will help folks that are really just living paycheck to paycheck. I will, do think that, you know, having it monthly, it's, the water bill's one of those things that's a little bit odd anyways, I guess, even PG&E, because you get these different spikes depending upon what time of year you are, you know? They're different depending, you know, PG&E's usually lower in the summer because of where we're at, and, but water's higher because you use more wat, you know? So, it, there is some amount of differences in what the monthly bills are, but that's at least, as you point out, within, within your control. And to go back to your question about people's use of water, I think that even if the folks are doing the things that you were talking about, if they meet that criteria, those three criteria, it really doesn't matter. If they're low-income and then they have health problems, it doesn't matter. Their water is not supposed to be disconnected. It doesn't matter what they're using it for. There's no requirement of what you're using it for. So, that's, again, maybe another issue with what this bill is really meant to do, and I think it really was meant as a, you know, health and well-being, and that gets a little bit grayer, I think, when you start talking about some of those other things. But, I certainly would support moving to monthly.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Moore?
In the situation where you have maybe multifamily dwelling or like a mobile home park or something like that, if you had the service that was not being paid for by the manager or the property itself, there's a right for the individual to meter their own water. And we haven't flushed that out, have we?
It's actually laid out in there what exactly they need to do. So, there, if, I think, an individual can take on the entire bill themselves and, and decide to put on a payment plan, if they meet the low income, so even if they're in a multifamily unit, they can decide to take the bill in their own name and put it on a payment plan in order to keep the water on. So, if they meet those three criteria, they could do that. So, it is still, and then, under an HOA, like a mobile home park, I think if it's more than a certain percentage, I'll have to look that up, they can do the same thing. So, you can decide to take on the bill and then, and then, there's a means for them to bill it back to the landlord. They can deduct it from their rent is what they could do.
Okay. Well, I was just thinking it would be a nightmare if you had to have multifamilies or different individual units have to meter those or however they were going to do that. That's something that we haven't, that wasn't necessarily addressed completely in that, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think, like, you would, you wouldn't, you wouldn't change the metering setup. You would just literally take on the bill, you know, for the, like, if there's a multifamily, like apartment building, for example, has a single meter on it, you would, as a resident in that apartment building, you could decide, I'm going to take over this account that the landlord formally paid, and, and then, the account would be in your name, and you'd be responsible, I guess, in theory, for the whole charge. And then, through this mechanism that Angela described, you could try to deduct your rent through sort of a, to get the money back. But, it'd be a big bill for a, you know...
So, in the case of a duplex, if, if the owner of that duplex wasn't paying the bill and then the two occupants determine that they, one of them wanted to pay the bill, that would be the whole bill and not maybe half the bill?
Right, it's the whole thing.
I mean, if it's one meter coming in, so it's not really addressed.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it would be, I mean, that whoever takes the ownership for the bill would have to then internally figure out how anyone else in that complex pays them.
Hopefully, we don't get that far.
Yeah.
But, I, but I do like the idea of, in this case, even though it might be a little bit more of an administrative nightmare, it's probably going to be easier for many to go to a monthly billing and hopefully avoid some of these. I would support the monthly.
Yes, please.
And with our new meters and meter reading, it does make it a little bit easier than when it was a very manual process years ago, which, that was very labor-intensive, correct?
Yeah, this would not, moving to monthly would not be really feasible without this upgraded meter system.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, was, besides, it sounds like you have clear direction, the four of us here, about monthly. Were there other issues that you needed, any other further direction on with this? Or was that the big one? That's it? Okay. All right, then. Thank you. And we will now move on to item eight, which is approval of final agenda. Do we have any changes, city manager?
No proposed changes. Thank you, mayor.
All right, very good. And let me get a piece of paper out here. So, now, we're at citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to city council policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend that time, that time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. I do not have any speaker cards, but does anybody, yes, Ms. Alderman, wish to speak?
February 25th, 2009, that is the last time an item on the agenda for a vote did not pass the city council in this chamber. All of you council members, during your tenures as council members, have passed every vote before you. In the last decade, there are... In the last decade, there have been 11 individual no votes, only 11 no votes in a decade. That resulted, though, with four to one votes still passing. You have a 99% unanimous vote record over the last decade. Why are we citizens even here? It doesn't matter what we say, as you will pass everything on the agenda, even without a citizen in the room. You will do it usually unanimously. When somebody like me tries to question and challenge your status quo in federal court, what happens? You hire a cutthroat East Bay attorney, not Mr. Baker, Bakker, to crush my case, and refuse mediation or even talking to me about improving your behaviors. I mostly want injunctive relief and for you to talk to me and improve this city. Any money I would receive would go into a special needs trust anyways. I am not in this for the money. Your cutthroat attorney first, first takes advantage of the five-day power outage, and my elderly mother's fall, knowing these facts, and files a motion to dismiss 15 pages the next day, when Katari's power comes back on, one day after the power came back on. This imposed two weeks deadlines to respond to the motion to dismiss. This motion to dismiss would need a Supreme Court justice to write the legal argument back. Being my own lawyer, pro se, I didn't know what, how to ask the court for hardship postponement. Did I get one ounce of cooperation or advice from your attorney? None. Luckily, I figured it out and have a sympathetic federal drudge. You all look heartless now in cooperating with the court, not talking to me, or doing anything moral, or in more, and you're doing anything moral, immoral to defend your status quo. You don't want change, you don't want to change a thing, that is obvious by your actions. You'll crush anybody in your way if they speak up and try to implement change. So there is no use for us as citizens to be here, I am now leaving.
All right, thank you for your comments, is there anyone else? Did you have anything for, no, okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this point? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment, and just as a reminder, this was also for the consent calendar items, so no takers, okay? All right, we will move on to the consent calendar, item 10, and we have items A, B, and C.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
There's a motion to second, is there any further discussion on these items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So please show a 4-0-1 extension vote, thank you very much. And item 11 is direction on future agenda items, does anybody have anything this evening to bring up?
I don't.
No, no?
No, thank you.
No, and no. All right, well, this is interesting, so item 12 says public hearings, but we have none.
That's right.
Just to keep you on your toes.
Okay, well, I, I'm still getting over this cold, but I caught that. Item 13 is regular agenda, and our first item is declaration of climate emergency and support of a 2030 climate emergency mobilization strategy. I'll turn that over to, bless you, to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, so, well, I won't go into a lot of background because I think we all, the council certainly knows well the issues that we face globally with climate change, and locally, I will just run over a quick summary of, I know you guys are all there, but just of where we've been. So in 2002, and this is in the staff report, in case anybody in the audience wanted to follow along, but in 2002, the council first started pushing the climate change concern to the forefront and started looking at that, and then we're in a serious way as it became obvious that climate change was an issue to be dealt with as soon as possible. In 2004, the council set a 20% reduction in greenhouse gases, grass emissions from municipal operations, and that was followed in 2005 by a council goal of 30% reduction in the community, city of Katari. In 2008, we adopted a greenhouse gas action plan to reduce municipal sources of greenhouse gases, and since that time, that was sort of our initial roadmap, to do a lot of the retrofit work that the, that the council did, both the motor retrofits, the lighting retrofits in City Hall and in citywide, and the streetlights, more energy-efficient cars, the meter project that we talked about earlier tonight was part of that, because now, you know, it takes a lot of energy to pump water, and so to the extent that you can detect leaks early, both in the distribution system but also for customers, so that they have the tools to be able to see leaks on their, at their meter, or on their property as soon as possible, helps reduce water waste, which also helps reduce the energy for pumping water that's not being used. So there's been a lot of work in all those areas. In, in 2009, the city also supported the formation of the Regional Climate Protection Authority, which was the first in the nation, the first in the nation organization to foster a collaborative approach countywide to set goals, pool resources, and formalize partnerships, and work across the jurisdictional lines. 2013, the city was also heavily involved in the initial formation of Sunamaklean Power, so our local CCA for cleaner energy, which dramatically reduced on the community-wide emissions goal, as well as the city goals, dramatically reduced our emissions from electricity sources, the power mix that we got, and most of our residents as well, and businesses. And then, we passed a resolution in 2017 to support the Paris Climate Agreement, and in 2018, the council adopted Climate Action 2020 Plan, which was, which is a plan that was worked on by our CPA, and it was adopted, ultimately, they had to decertify the EIR, but we still took the, the plans, and this includes Katari, who, you know, took them forward, the council adopted the plan, and that is a, that plan really hasn't identifies the different ways that people can reduce their greenhouse gas profiles in development, so different development measures to meet the requirements. And, so that's been an initial tool, even though it's not as, it doesn't have an EIR, which would have been the gold standard, at least we have the plan that people can pick from the menu of things, and it shows how much, you know, greenhouse gas emissions they, reductions they can get through different measures when they do development. And, and then finally, this is the most recent thing, just this year, as you all know, the City Council directed the transition of all city energy accounts to Evergreen, which is 100% renewable. So there's been a lot going on, really, over the last two decades, to try to move us to be closer to what they call carbon neutral, or certainly reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, both at the city and in the community. The, the resolution attached to the, to the staff report is a template that was originally developed through our CPA, and with the collaboration of the various cities, but they developed this template that then, that they adopted, and they also put that forward for, a version of that for cities in the county to also adopt, and the city, the city version is what is attached, is what is attached to the packet, and most of its, most of this, as you know, by reading it, is reiterating what we've already, what we already all know, and what we've talked about. The main, the main thing that this does is it reaffirms the council's commitment to greenhouse gas reductions by continuing it as a key priority of the council as we move forward each year, and, and our various, both in the budget, but also in our, in the various work efforts that we undertake, and it also does commit the city to work with, this is really our CPA, on what's called the 2030 climate emergency mobilization strategy, and they have just started that, they had a recent discussion at our CPA about what type of climate emergency mobilization strategy support the various cities that make up our CPA and the county want, do they want a plan, do they want a plan with staff support, staff-supported our CPA for implementation, and that's an ongoing discussion, as I understand it, the our CPA staff are coming back to that board to have further discussions about what the various options might look like. So I would expect that there would be a follow-up action where, where the our CPA board makes a recommendation as a body, and then that's gonna go out to all the different members, including, including you, to decide if, you know, if, if each city is gonna support that level of support, because it comes, you know, you have to make contributions annually to our CPA to support their activities, so if you want more support, you make more in annual contributions, if you are okay with less support, then you can keep the current level, so that'll come in the future. Tonight, it's really supporting the 2030 climate mobilization, emergency mobilization strategy, which is one of the key sort of takeaways from the resolution. And with that, somehow I turned that into a longer staff report than I planned, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. So one thing I was just kind of picking up on this list, I'm sure it's not every motion and, you know, resolution that the city has passed, however, over those last 17 years, there's 10 examples, and can I assume that those decisions were made at least by the minimum of a majority of the City Council? Just looking for a factual statement here.
Yes, I was, I was there for a lot of them, and yes.
Yes, thank you, all right. So, so it's a good thing, depending on, you know, voting on things, that, you know, having a majority of positive decisions moving forward, that's actually a good thing, just pointing that out if you needed to know any further. And also, some of these actions, either listed or even ones not listed, I thought of a couple, apply to our contractors, it's not just the city itself, it's even those doing work for the city, so it's even wider spread at some level. I mean, I think of the, the pesticide ban as an example of one, in my opinion, that's, you know, something that really can do a lot of damage to the environment. So with that, I'll stop coughing, and see if there's any questions for staff from council members, and I'll start with Councilmember Moore.
No, I, I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harvey, none, Vice Mayor Skilman?
No, no questions, just comments or later.
Just comments, okay, well, with that, I think the public also has some comments, so I'm gonna go ahead and open public hearing, I have only one speaker card, that will not prevent you from not speaking if you didn't fill out a speaker card, but we'll start out of courtesy with Lori Ann Barber.
Thank you, council and staff, I speak in support of Katari adopting this resolution, I feel like the climate situation is the most important thing facing humanity at this point, and whatever we do, we really can't do it fast enough, so even the 2030 timeline on this, like, is not enough, but we all do what we can, and so the main thing I want to say is that words are cheap, and this resolution calls for, for doing things, but I want to make sure that there's, you know, that things get done, that we don't just say, yeah, we care about the climate, blah, 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 so I have a couple of suggestions, I mean, I think the scope of what little tiny Katari can do is pretty limited, but we all have to do what we can, so some thoughts are that the city could have an education program about Evergreen to its residents and businesses, I haven't checked recently, but I think at one point I heard that, like, somewhere between 1 and 3% of people who, you know, get power from Sunamaklean Power are on Evergreen, so there's a lot of room there to get more people to get cleaner power, that events that are in the city, that we promote them, or maybe even require them to be zero-waste, so that we're minimizing waste, which causes various problems, including greenhouse gases in some cases, promoting greater adoption of electric vehicles and increasing the charging infrastructure, I don't, I don't know what the mechanism for that would be, but it's just another idea, creating complete streets whenever possible, so that biking and walking are safer and therefore more appealing, I think transportation, we all know, is a big part of the problem, particularly in this county, and so anything we can do to get people out of cars is gonna help the problem, ensuring that new housing is built with, I mean, this probably is already true, that new housing has to meet standards that make it efficient, but also consider an all-electric ordinance, like the one that Santa Rosa just passed, and also Berkeley, finding mechanisms to help people make their older homes more efficient, and considering, maybe this is another education, but alternatives to gas-powered generator use, I think we all know that in the last power outage, a lot of people used gas-powered generators, and they themselves sometimes cause fires, but they definitely cause greenhouse gas emissions, so it's kind of problematic. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate that. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Spiker? I'm so formal when I do that with last names, I know.
Thank you, very much along the same lines, I support the ordinance and hope that you'll, you'll pass it, the resolution, I was also trying to think about ways that it could be implemented at a practical level in Katari, through the building codes, making buildings more energy-efficient, through transportation by working with transport companies, Golden Gate Transit and the bus company, to make the bus schedules more accessible to more people, and the smart train, because they tend to end very early in the evening, increasing electric vehicle charging infrastructure, making things safer for bicyclists and pedestrians, including the safe routes to school, so that children can walk to Thomas Page School without having to be driven every day, increasing whatever can be done with businesses, through events, with housing associations for apartments, to reduce waste, working with Zero Waste Sonoma and Recology and Green Mary, to do whatever can be done to, to head for zero waste, planting trees, planting trees in the parks, planting trees in parking lots to create shade between cars, those kinds of things, I was wondering if the city could work with the chamber and with businesses to increase that kind of, that kind of thing, I was just, just trying to think about how this could be implemented in a practical way, rather than just being more words on paper that don't result in anything very tangible, so thank you for what you've done so far, and I hope we can do a lot more, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Also, thank you for your comments you sent in advance through our system, there was at least four that I, I've seen, so, and you were one of those, so thank you for that. Anyone else like to speak on this topic? Mr. Hancock?
Yes, good evening, Council, Neil Hancock, very pleased to support this, I very much think it's a good thing, I know there's a lot of other councils and municipalities that are supporting it, and it's a worldwide effort, and yet also the news today is just how much that greenhouse gases, both carbon dioxide, methane, and also nitrous oxides are increasing, so, I mean, I, I definitely see the benefit of what we can do locally, and it's, it's just hoping that everybody else comes in, we know that there's a lot of naysayers as well, and it's gonna take a big, big effort overall. I would hope that we can do more sustainability analysis as we move down here, it's all about really how not to have that carbon, methane, nitrous oxides get created, you know, how can they be captured in, in natural cycles? In the town, safe walking, I mean, having walking zones or having people walk, but when I talk to people about walking and bicycling, it's always about safety, people's perceptions of safety, having kids start off, I mean, there's definitely a group of people that are very into cycling and also walking, but it tends to be, I think, a fairly small group, and when you talk to people, it starts pretty young, so, once people get out of the habit... So once people get out of the habit of a healthy walking lifestyle, it's very, very hard. And our built infrastructure just is very, very, doesn't support it very much. I mean, it is just so hard to get our built infrastructure designed and created, that pedestrians and bicyclists have fallen off that agenda. So I know we're doing more about that, so I'm, I very much appreciate it, that we're getting in. We're going to be doing a more of a pedestrian and bicycle update. We have various things that are in the works, so that's really good to see. An area that we not really looked at too much is, is how we do more of a permaculture and, and urban permaculture analysis, which is being looked at in other places, but it's really how to keep these dynamic cycles. How can you actually not have the carbon produced in the first place? How can you have buildings that are fit into the landscape and are pleasant, and that you don't have to heat excessively or cool excessively? I mean, I think in this area, cooling excessively is something that is where we're going, but we do have to live with the historical built landscape, and how we actually improve that is just really challenging to budgets and to, to thinking. So that would be my, you know, major input is really, is safe walking, getting people out there and bicycling. People getting bicycling and urban, how to get people walking around is just really critical to appreciating the environment and talking to them. Oops, under there. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. You didn't have to cut yourself off. I could have, I could have done that for you. It's fine. Excellent. Anyone else like to speak on this topic? Gavel's going up. It's going to go down. All right, seen, no one. Go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to council for recommendations. And I, and I think, I don't know. So I've been on this planet for 58 years now, and I've seen some dramatic changes. And I'm seeing more of them in the last 10 years, and that's what frightens me. And, you know, a lot of decisions that are made at the Washington DC level can be sort of out of our hands. When you're making decisions on policies that impact the environment, that stuff you can't necessarily, in, say, a new administration, you can't go back on, because you've already created damage that may be irreversible. And I think, you know, just simply looking at the severity of weather events, whether it's, you know, rain, or tornadoes, or hurricanes, fires, I mean, we've had more than our fair share, but so have many other jurisdictions around. And to me, it's, it's not just that, you know, there's been increased forest litter, and that's why the fires are so bad. That certainly contributes to it, but there's so much more. And I think, I think we need to have a real awakening, even for those, I think, Neil, you, maybe it was you that mentioned, I can't remember now, but people who don't necessarily believe that there's changes going on in our environment, well, they're real. And to not see that, and then to not take any action on it, that's what really troubles me. So I really hope that there's changes, and I think, you know, when you have this declaration of a climate emergency, it sounds so Hollywood dramatic, you know, to call it something like that, but that's exactly what we have in front of us. And we do need to, we need to make changes. And yes, we're a small city, but you need to start. And, you know, we're not, we're not the first one. There's some 900-plus jurisdictions that have come on board with this, and I just think more and more need to pile on. And then, most importantly, take action. Let's not have this really nice document that just sits on a shelf somewhere, it's like, yeah, no, we did that, check the box, and we're done. No, now we got to get our hands dirty and do something about it. So I'm done preaching, I promise, and I will turn to the vice mayor, see if you have any comments regarding this issue.
Sure, yes. I mean, and I, I want to start off saying I'm really proud of what we have done so far, even without being told we had to do it. So I was, I was really glad, and a lot of things too, that we've come up with as far as, just things that we wanted to see done locally here, that, you know, with the plastic bags, and I mean, and just all kinds of things that have kind of come down, but then also that we've wanted to initiate on our own, just because we all have been really thoughtful about it. And also, as far as you were commenting too, about the yay votes and things like that too, I also think a lot of that has to do with our staff, that really vets all of these ideas and flushes them out, and answers our questions behind the scenes, and then really presents it in a way that makes us go, oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's exactly what we were hoping for, and what our citizenry have been saying that they're supportive of. So that is all I have to say on that issue. I'm very much in support of that and of this initiative, and then also actually putting words into action and doing even more that we can. And I like a lot of the ideas that were presented tonight, so thank you very much for coming and sharing those thoughts and ideas with us, and keeping us on the right track.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore?
Well, I, I think we're behind the eight ball on this, and I think it's a critical that we continue to move forward on this. I mean, even when you have institutions like global insurance companies going, that climate change is going to be catastrophic, and, and their bottom line is capitalism, they even understand it. So, you know, there's, there's no denying that we need to move forward. So I would support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey, I already said Moore, sorry. I wanted more, more, that's all.
Yeah, you bring up, you bring up a very good point, because some of the businesses are starting to realize and recognize that the climate and the changes in the climate are impacting things. I think that there was over 350,000 residences that lost their insurance because of the fires. That's a pretty big deal in California, for that many residences to lose their insurance. So it, it is starting to impact businesses, so I hope that we will see some help there with some of those. And as we all know, that, that stuff goes in cycles. They'll figure out how to price it, and it'll come, yeah, but it'll come back. But I really appreciate the suggestions for the actions. We are a small city, but every step that we take does help in its own way, and we can only manage really what's around us. A lot of the things that we do in, a lot of the regional things, you know, the things that we do with our water, the way we manage our water, and how we save some of the water, and all the work that has been done with the Water Agency on looking at that, I can't, I'm not going to say it right, that atmospheric rivers, and managing that helps with that, the work that's being done with the Waste Management Agency, and trying to help with getting rid of reducing our waste, which was brought up as an idea. It's all the accumulation of the little things that, that we can do, that can help move us in, in the right direction. So I do support this, and we'll try and get some of these steps made, and it's baby steps that get you to big leaps.
Thank you very much for that, and I guess it's time for a decision.
I would move we adopt a resolution declaring a climate emergency and supporting creation of a 2030 climate emergency mobilization strategy.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? I think we've all exhausted our thoughts on that.
Well, I appreciate the speakers bringing up electric cars, so then I don't look self-serving, so thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, intentions, please show 401 vote. And again, thank you for your comments and for being here. Appreciate that. And we will now move to item 13B, which is the approval of an integrated pest management plan. Yet one more tool that we can add to that list.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So on August 13th of this year, the city council had a discussion about the use of synthetic pesticides in the city. This is specifically municipal uses of synthetic pesticides. And at that meeting, the city council directed staff to move to eliminate the use of pesticides by city staff and our contractors. Following that meeting, the, the city, city staff, it was fairly straightforward to essentially stop all use. The follow-up item that we were coming back with was both working with our contractors to also make sure that they, they no longer use it, and also laying this all out in a written policy, which is the Integrated Pest Management Plan. So this item has that written policy. This policy was, was based on the Town of Windsor's policy, who was brought up in that meeting in Au- in August as an example of a, of a, a good policy that met a lot of the goals of the council. So I will just say that the, that the policy, as you read through it, and its main, you know, one of its main purposes is just to communicate what the, what the city's practices are with regard to pest management, and this would be something that would be posted on the website and available for everyone to look at. I think that was part of, well, that was part of the discussion in August, was that there was just not a lot of certainty as what the city's practices were, because it wasn't clearly stated anywhere in one place on a public, you know, site like a website where they could find it easily. So Integrated Pest Management Plan would accomplish that goal. It would, should be posted, if it's adopted, be posted on the city website. And it basically, sort of in a nutshell, says that we don't use synthetic pesticides, although there is a, like, an emergency provision essentially, if there's some sort of emergency, or some very unusual situation that requires like a one-time use or something like that, that that, there's, there is a mechanism for that, but that would also be all documented, so if anybody wanted to know, you know, when that happened or why it happened, that would be available. Although, right now, I kind of skipped over, I skipped over sort of what we do. When we talked in, in August, the city only has some limited use of Roundup, like glyphosate, and that's really the only thing that we have used historically, and only in spot applications, like on landscape areas and sidewalks, and that, that type of use. And we are moving to experiment with different, you know, organic or non-synthetic pesticides or herbicides, and attached in the same packet is the updated agreement with our landscape contractor, moving them in the same direction. And it'll be, you know, to be frank, it'll be a bit of a learning experience, because I think contractors and, I mean, you know, even our crews are familiar with Roundup. They know how it works, they know how much to apply, they know what to expect. As you move to other products, you just have to experiment with them, and some are going to be more effective, some will be less effective, some will take more time, some will take less. So it'll be a bit of a learning, a learning curve on that, and this time of year, we really don't use it anyway, but come springtime, when all the weeds come up, that's really will, that really will be the test of these different products, and we can, so I just point that out, because in springtime, things may look a little rougher at first, until we can kind of get a handle on, you know, what the best methods are to control weeds, but it's a learning process. So with that, I'll give it back to you. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. It is a learning process, and we will learn from it, but at the same time, it's what we have to do. It's the right thing to do. So if I recall, the, the price that had come to us the first time we had a report on this was not significantly, but a bit higher than what the report shows now, which is $1,000. And, you know, an additional $1,000, as it stands right now, from the contractor to charge the city to implement this, again, why would we, why would we not want to go in that direction? To me, $1,000 in our city budget is not a lot of money. So great work on getting all of that information. I know it took forever to get that from the contractor, and it could have been, you know, a three-minute phone call, you know, had they had their act together a little better. But with that, any questions for the city manager? Yes, Councilmember Harvey?
So as you pointed out, it will be an experiment, a learning experience as we go through the next spring. I recall that the last time we had this discussion, there were individuals that spoke that were hoping that we were going to enforce this on local residences, and we said, no, this is really just about city properties and stuff. So I guess my question is, is that as we go through these learning experiences, and we find out what substitutes work, and in what periods of time they work, if we couldn't educate our residents via our website or whatever, you know, to share that knowledge, so that they then will have alternatives, and so we would lead by example by not using it, and here's what we found that works, and here's what doesn't work, and, you know, maybe then we can show them other possibilities.
As I recall too, there were several emails that came from a resident at Windmill Farms. Damian, I think you saw those too.
It was Windmill Farms, yeah.
Yeah. I know I still must still have those emails in my inbox. I mean, I'd be happy to reach out to that individual and just say, you know, if you haven't heard, so, well, we haven't voted yet, but assuming there's a positive vote somewhere in the next few minutes in moving this direction, that, you know, the cost to do all of the areas within the city limits that are owned by the city or operated by the city is approximately $1,000 a year, and that's something that person can bring back to either their HOA, or, you know, the, the manager of the property or whatever, because that was, I think that was what was missing, is like, you know, they really want to know, well, what's this cost going to be?
And, yeah, I would just, I mean, this is obvious, I think, but I would just caveat it by saying that, that once it's actually, well, actually, once we try doing this next year, there may be, you know, significantly more staff time or manpower time, but we don't know that.
Right.
At this point, this is, but still, $1,000 is not very much money.
Well, and
So hopefully.
If you think about the geographic land that $1,000 covers versus what is technically and literally at Windmill Farms, significantly less. Anyway, it just, it gives them something maybe to present to that management there, and, you know, they can go from there. And I'll do that. I'll reach out, and I'll send that info. You already spoke. Councilmember Moore?
Uh, no, I think it just piggybacks on what we're trying to accomplish, which way we're going. In looking at it, I'm assuming that this is also inclusive of the lighting in the landscape districts as well?
This is all city areas.
Right.
All city-owned areas, yeah.
Well, we don't know.
And city-maintained areas, I should say.
City-maintained, okay, perfect. No, I would be in support of this. Thank you. It will be interesting to find out what product they use, other than vinegar and salt.
You know, yeah, there's just, there's a lot of home remedies that work really well.
Very effective, yeah.
I've used them, so. And also, a great way to get rid of weeds? Pull them. I'm just saying, from experience, it works really well.
Yeah, but there's OSHA regulations on weed pulling, so then you have the other agency to consider.
Thank you for that. Thank you for pointing that out.
Certainly.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Thank you. Thank you.
You are done, I hope.
So, yes, I'm also in support of this, as we discussed back in August, and one of the ideas that occurred to me too, is what Councilmember Harvey brought up about educating the public about this is what's, we find is working in this, you know, with the city could be included in their monthly water bill. So anyway, that just occurred to me, is look at all these things coming together and coalescing. So anyhow, I will stop talking now, but I am definitely in support of this.
All right. Thank you, and I think you kind of know which way I'm leaning already, since I've spoken on this. So I'd like to bring this back to council for some action.
Do you have public comment?
You know, I think I'm going to go ahead and ask for some comment from the public. Yeah. That's embarrassing. But anyone would like to speak on this topic? Don't be shy, Mr. Hancock. Sorry about that. I was just ahead of myself.
Yes, glad there's other people awake on the committee. I mean, there's other people paying attention and stuff. I think it's great to have the integrated pest management, and to look at that, just really reduce it, the amount going out there. There, there is the other side, though, of landscape management, where I think some of the time, and it's, it's difficult to figure out exactly how this works, but the landscapes are managed more to grow weeds, and then we have to cut them back. So I certainly, you know, how you actually help people to understand what are the good plants to leave there, and not just to weed whack everything, or anything that's green to spray it at certain times of the year, or anything. So it's certainly, I know, it's just an ongoing process for land managers all over, of how do you cultivate for, how do we play God? How do we have the beneficial plants that are around and stuff? And I mean, I think the big example has been the whole of the Qatari Creek critters, just the process of getting the right level of plants in there, what type it takes, you know, the number know, the number of years it sometimes takes to not go and whack down the good plants when they're young. And I, and I've seen it around where, you know, people are fairly, they're basically set going. I have the same problem when I've got my lawnmower out or my weed whacker, you know, how do I actually work around the plants that you really want to encourage? So, I think the integrated pest managements are really great, sort of first, it's a great step. We don't want those nasty chemicals out there that can cause more problems, knock-on problems. So, it's great to see it as a supporter. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? I guess I was really just blocking, blocking hearing from Neil Hancock, but I'm glad he spoke, so... All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, we can bring it back to council for some direction and motion.
I would make a motion that we adopt an integrated pest management plan for municipal landscape maintenance.
Second?
All right. Motion in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Please show 401 vote in favor. Thank you.
Just glad we didn't break that record from 2009.
It's continuing. All right. Item 13C is, conveniently enough, the landscape agreement for maintenance of public landscape areas.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is just a sequential item. There's not really a whole lot to talk about, other than it's an extension to the existing agreement with our landscape contractor. As we mentioned in the prior item, there is $1,000 more added into this contract per year for management of weeds without, without using synthetic pesticides. So, in other words, not using the Roundup that they previously used. So, that's really the only change of any significance to this landscape agreement is both that addition, slight, slight additional cost, but also the requirement that they follow our integrated pest management plan, which includes the prohibition on using synthetic pesticides.
And if I may add to that, the city staff has already implemented stopping the use of, like, glyphosate. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay. But I know this is the contractor, which obviously it takes a little bit longer, so good, so we're moving, moving it forward. Thank you.
Yeah. And just, just to put it in context, the city staff generally do, like, they would do weed control, so they do a lot of, like, roadside weed management, but it's mostly just, you know, side of the road mowing. There's no application of anything. There is, and they do weed whacking around fire hydrants. And the only time that they'd ever really would use any Roundup, or primarily the only time they'd use it is, like, in cracks, where you have things run up through cracks in asphalt or concrete, and it's just, it was just a simpler way to deal with it. But the landscape contractor that's, that we're talking about for this item does the vast majority of the landscapes. So, all the, all the planter strips, basically, all the parks, so the vast majority of the landscape areas.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for city manager?
Question?
Can you ask a question? Do you really want to, want me to answer that, or... Yes, of course you can.
So, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyways. So, the area that is surrounding either side of Highway 101, around 116 there, there's a good picture of it on page 189. So, basically, on either side of the highway there, I think Caltrans is responsible for those areas, kind of if you kind of look between the off-ramp and Highway 116, and then the on-ramp, and what, those kind of, that four corners right there, those tend to be a mess and ugly and trashy and not well taken care of. Is that Caltrans responsibility?
You mean the, the areas...
Like, the off, so the off-ramp from, from Santa Rosa to 116 there? That kind of grassy area on both sides of the off-ramp?
Yeah.
And then across the street where the redwood trees are and all that, and likewise on, on the other side of the freeway. It doesn't seem that those four areas are very well taken care of.
So, the, what you see on page 189 is what's actually under our landscape contract, that piece, but that's just like the tree, the tree wells and...
Right, right.
That median island in 116.
And we talked about, you know, the wall next to the freeway and on the other side, on Commerce, the wall next to the freeway, but these four areas seem to get neglected a lot.
Yeah, so it is all Caltrans property. What, our landscape contractor, PJM, adopted these landscape areas, the inside of the interchange. And they adopted it for landscaping and garbage litter collection.
Okay.
So, you can adopt it for multiple things.
Okay.
There's even, I think, more things you can adopt a landscape for, but in this particular instance, it's for landscaping and garbage litter. And so, Public Works works with them on the litter collection, our landscape contractor. But it's, it's actually kind of unbelievable how much the litter blows. I think what happens, or actually, I know what happens is...
I know what happens.
Is you have that stretch of garbage, that stretch of highway, freeway, all the way up to Runaway Park Expressway, and there's that concrete wall on the...
Right.
On the outside edge. And so, all, anything that comes out of someone's car or gets thrown out a window lands against that concrete barrier and then blows down to the off-ramp in Kattati, and then it goes in the trash.
And I've seen a lot of it fly out of the garbage trucks, because the garbage trucks take that off-ramp.
Yeah.
And it's flying out of those trucks right there.
Right, right, going to meet them, yeah.
Yeah, they're going to go out to meet them, yeah.
Yeah, so there's that one, that southbound off-ramp.
Right.
Right? That tends to get a lot of garbage all the time.
Exactly.
That's a constant problem, but, yeah. Before that, though, they, they ended up adopting, our landscape contractor ended up adopting that whole area, not just that one off-ramp, but all four sides, because Caltrans would basically never get to the weed mowing, you know? It would be well into the summer before they get in there, because it just wasn't a priority for them. So, that was, that was sort of the impetus to have our landscape, that the landscape contractor took it over, because they're like, "Hey, you know, we can make it look a lot nicer than Caltrans does." There still is garbage, I recognize that, but that's, that's always a constant project, pulling garbage out of there.
So, then do you contact them when it starts getting a little ratty, since they've adopted it? How does that work?
Yeah, well, so if it gets, yeah, if it gets bad, just call the, our landscape contractor and say, "Hey, you know, get out there and, you guys help us out." Or Public Works might play the role sometimes, too.
Okay. Well, thank you. That was my question.
Very good. Councilmember Moore?
In, in looking at the contract with PJM, and I know we weren't necessarily looking to open up this contract, but now that we have it in front of us, the, as you know, I'm a big proponent of living wage. And on page 130 of the packet, it talks about the California prevailing wage law, Labor Code, Section 1720. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity or if it's come up, talking about what the prevailing wage is for general landscape maintenance employees, but it starts out at $12 an hour, which to me is not a living wage. And I don't know if we've had an opportunity, based on the contract, to ever audit payroll or anything of our contractor in this particular situation, and seeing if they are at or above a living wage, minimally, I would think would be at least $15 an hour.
So, we've, we have not audited their payroll for the wages that they provide their employees?
Okay.
At this point, we have not.
I would, I would love to see us do that, and not only to see, well, just to make sure that they're within the California prevailing wage law, and, and what those averages might be, or if there's anyone that's below what would be considered a living wage. And that was all I had on that.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Skilman?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions, okay. This is pretty straightforward, so why don't we go ahead and see if there's any public comment on this issue? So, we're back in sixth grade, everybody's just kind of looking at everybody else. That's fine. Oh, no, please, come, no, I'm going to reopen it. Please, come up, come up.
Hi, my name is Anila Roberts, and I'm a little shy about speaking in public. I just had a question. Is it regarding those particular areas that our, our local landscape took over, is it possible that they can be part of the Adopt a Highway system? Or are they part of the Adopt a Highway that groups volunteer to...
Yeah, that's a very good question. We'll see if staff has a reply for that, because I don't think I do, that's for sure.
Right.
Thank you. Anyone else, before I regavel? All right, seeing no one, go ahead and close the public hearing. Do you happen to know, off the top of your head? I have no idea.
I'm sorry, I missed which area?
The, the areas that we were talking about there.
You mean if, like, citizens can just go out there and...
Well, you know what they have...
You know how they have the Adopt a Highway program? If those areas can be considered part of that, so that volunteers can help with...
So, it has to be a Caltrans road?
It has to be a Caltrans, yeah, I mean, as, as far as that program goes, it has to be a Caltrans road, yeah. And that area was formally adopted by the contractor.
It, okay, so it's a different program than the Adopt a Highway?
No, it's Adopt a Highway.
Oh, it is Adopt a Highway?
It is, yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's not an Adopt a Off-Ramp?
It's an Adopt a Off-Ramp.
Yeah, there is a sign.
There is a sign.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, they're, they are the proud owners of that landscape area.
Okay.
And, or proud adoptee, you know, parents or whatever of it. Yeah, whatever you call them. Anyway, but Caltrans does have a bunch of requirements with regard to, like, liability and insurance and stuff, so, but the contractor can meet those. And even if you're like a, sometimes you'll, on the, on the highways, you'll see, like, an individual that adopted the highway or a, like, a business, some other business. I can't, I don't believe Caltrans, in my discussions with them, they've never allowed, like, a person just to go out and, like, if you put your...
You do have one in Windsor.
Yes, but...
Sam has had that for as long as I've known.
Yes, but my understanding of how it works is that, like, let's say Sam, in this case, would contribute money, would, would to a, a approved Caltrans contractor, who would then actually do the work, right?
And Sam gets his name.
And Sam gets his name.
Oh, so it's not really his adopted highway.
He's not out there with an orange vest and a litter picker.
He's not. Okay. Interesting.
No, because Caltrans, I mean, for obvious reasons, when you work next to a freeway, you don't, you want to know what you're doing, so they have, like, pre-approved contractors that Caltrans uses typically, right? When you, when you're like, like a Sam Salmon kind of situation, where they, they've been vetted by Caltrans, they have all the insurance, they have all the freeway work safety practice training, and they can be on the side of the freeway picking up stuff or mowing the lawn.
That's much too high of a risk for attorneys to be on the highway.
That's, that's my understanding of how it works.
Learned something new.
Well, now I've lost track if we voted on this yet.
We have not.
We have not.
Thank you.
So...
We did do public comment.
So, in light of my questions regarding prevailing wage, if we'd have come back, if, if you came back with the information and it was determined that they were either not in compliance with that or not in a position where they were supporting a, a living wage, we would have the ability, I would imagine, to readdress the contract? If I read the contract correctly, and we could, we have a right to rescind within, I think, 30 days' notice or something like that?
I would assume so.
Yeah, the only thing that we would have is just prevailing wage law to compare it against.
Right. Okay.
So, we'll get that information first and then go from there. Okay.
So, with that, I would support a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year agreement with PJM Yard Maintenance, Inc., to maintain public landscaping.
Second?
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Please show a 401 vote in favor of approving that. And we will go to item 14, which is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, our annual holiday toy drive has begun, and the city of Kattati, Rancho Adobe Fire District and Rotary kicked off the toy drive yesterday. There's a group picture in front of the Kattati Rancho Adobe Fire Station, and that picture will be in this week's Community Voice, in case anyone is really interested to see that. The toys will be delivered before Christmas by Santa, who will be riding in police cars. Is he riding in the back?
He's in trouble. Oh, boy.
Not to send the wrong message to children, but, yeah. Anyway, he rides in first responder vehicles and delivers presents, wrapped presents to children. So, there's also these, the presents are donations from the community, from anyone that wants to donate to the program. And they can donate unwrapped toys to the Kattati Police Lobby or the Rancho Adobe Fire Station here in Kattati. And, and they go to, they go to families in need. That's, that's what the whole program is about. Also, we've, we talked a little bit about, you know, we had Housing Workshop recently, and we've talked, at the last council meeting, I mentioned that there's a survey on our website about housing, about what kind of housing the community envisions moving forward. And I'm just putting it out there again, that, that survey is still posted on the city website under headlines, so if you have an opinion about housing and you haven't taken the survey, please get on the website and take the survey, because it's, it's a good opportunity to get your voice heard early in the process as we start moving through that, that planning effort. All right, this week, we have a sold-out Camp Kattati Thanksgiving Break Camp, happening through Wednesday afternoon. The campers are spending the days playing games, making crafts, and meeting new friends. And we're going to offer another camp during the time off from school for winter break. Space is limited, so make sure you sign up early, or if you know someone that wants to go, sign up early. All right, so the city is, once again... I'm not saying any, I'm, hey, you know, there is no age limit on it, so anyone can go. Everyone's welcome, but you may have other things going on, I don't know. So, the city is, once again, partnering with the Redwood Empire Food Bank to host a food drive for those in need. If you'd like to donate, please bring non-perishable food items to the Ben Inside City Hall near the recreation office. So, kind of a theme, the homemakers are doing a food drive, the toy drive is happening, and we also have Red, through Redwood Empire Food Bank, the barrels here at City Hall, where people can drop off food. I also saw a food drive in front of Oliver, so it's just the time of year. And also, the annual holiday tree lighting event will be next Friday, December 6th, from 4:00 to 8:00. I think we already talked about how much fun it's going to be, but I will say that there'll be a trackless train there that actually operates off a track, horse and carriage rides, cookie decorating, storytime, crafts, and a chance to visit with Santa. And, yeah, maybe the Grinch, yeah, hopefully the Grinch can make it this year, yeah.
You know, if I could, if I could just stop you on that for just a second, one of the few perks you get as mayor of Kattati is you get to light the ceremonial tree downtown. And knowing that I'm going to be in Albuquerque and I'm going to miss this event, I could call in, right? Could I call in, get on speakerphone, and count down backwards from 10 or something?
Sure, call my cellphone, I'll keep you on speaker.
Oh, I see how...
Yeah, so there'll be a tree lighting, it'll be fun. And there's also going to be live music and entertainment throughout the evening by our very own North Bay Children's, or Theatrics Children's Theater Group. That seems kind of redundant. The Children's Theater Group. And the local duo, The Butter Dishes. And following that, Breakfast with Santa is on Saturday, December 14th, at 9:00 a.m., and there's a second seating for breakfast at 10:30 a.m. It's in the Kattati Room. Registration is open, spaces are filling up fast, so book now to save your spot with Santa. If you have any questions about this or any city programs, you can contact Ashley at 665-4222, raywilson@kattatacy.org, and also go to our website, our Facebook page, our Instagram page has all the information. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Any questions for the city manager? Vice Mayor, any questions? No? All right. Thank you very much for that report, and we'll now go to city council member reports, and I'll go to my far right and start with Councilmember Moore.
Not much to report. I just attended the Farmster's, Farm's Table Dinner, and held in a community room, which was a very nice event, and supporting Farmster... a community room, which was a very nice event, and supporting the Farmster program, which of course is over here at the Veranda Fletti Ranch, so it was a very nice event. And, and I think we have a REMF Annual Meeting coming up in January in St. Helena, so that's about it.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
I have nothing to report.
You have nothing to report?
Sorry.
No, that's, that's quite all right. I, you know, I missed one meeting, then I come back and you have nothing to report, that's fine. Vice Mayor Skilman?
I also have nothing to report out.
Wow, okay, since?
I'll cede my time to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, yes.
It's all about you.
It's all about me. Well, since I missed the last council meeting due to illness, which I'm still lingering, I've got all kinds of stuff to talk about, so sit back and get some coffee, because we're going to be here a while. Since the last council meeting I was at, which was October 22nd, there's been quite the gap of time here, and I'll be incredibly brief, there was our monthly Ag and Open Space Meeting, where we focused more on the matching grant guidelines, which this coming January, they'll probably be announced for, it's an every-other-year cycle. We also worked with the Board of Supervisors, and I couldn't attend that meeting because I was sick, but I did send in a lengthy email to the board, to each member, about why these guideline changes that we had made were very important. And they did adopt all the changes that we recommended, which was a really good thing. So, that was our discussion, that Ag and Open Space, of course, was that. And I'm just quickly flying through here. I was invited and I spoke to the Rotary Club, and so basically gave them some city updates, that was on the 7th of November. And there's the Board of Supervisors, a lot of these are easy, I was just sick and I couldn't attend any of them, it was pretty sad. Talked to the docents, did that, and, oh, by golly, here we are this week. So, that's it, you're lucky, it was shorter than I realized, darn. All right, with that?
I'm typically not grateful for illness, but in this case.
I understand where that came from, it was a feeling of love. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so, item 17, is any, I just crossed it out, public comment on non-action agenda items. I crossed it out and I didn't even bring it up. Anybody like to speak on anything? No? Is that what you're saying, is no? Wow, okay then. We'll move on, we'll just move on. Item 17, information received after the agenda was posted, we have any information? No?
Just the, just the web comments?
The emails that came in?
Yeah.
Right. All right, item 18 is our closed session, and we're a conference with City Labor Negotiators, Government Code, Section 54957.6, City Designated Representative, City Manager or Designee, Employee Organization, Cattati Employees Association. And this would be an appropriate time, if anybody has any public comments on that specific closed-session item, again, seeing not a lot of interest in making a public comment, then we will adjourn to closed session, and I will just let you know, at this point, when we come out of that closed session and do a report out, we'll officially adjourn the meeting, but I would like to say now that we'd like to do this and adjourn this meeting when we do get to that point in memory of Harold Griffith, who recently passed away and for many, many years was on the Fire District Board and just a longtime resident here. So, I just wanted to mention that before we all disappeared, and with that, we will?
Mayor DeLusso, if I may?
Yes, please.
There was a couple of quick announcements I wanted to make and I forgot about. I know that we're doing the tree lighting on December 7th, on the 6th, the Chamber of Commerce is doing their holiday cheer, which is open to the public, and I believe the 9th is the shop and stroll, is it the Chamber of Commerce?
The 6th is the tree lighting, 7th is, I think, shop and stroll.
No, the?
I thought it was the next day, shop and stroll. Yeah, Saturday, 7th.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all very good, and we will now adjourn to our closed-session item.